Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting of Independent School District 544 to order. Clerk, can you establish a form for us, please?
Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knudsen.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Here.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes here, and Steven Biggessa is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I give a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda passes. We will move on to the resolution of acknowledgements. Clerk?
I'd like to offer the following resolution and move for its adoption. A thank you to Brendan Daniels, Bradley and Kimberly Johnson, Paul and Darlene Johnson, Katie Johnson, and Kristen Anderson for their donation to the Otter Angel Account, an account created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for student meals. And a thank you to Dawn Bach for the donation of a trumpet to the Kennedy Secondary School Music Department.
Do we have a second on that resolution?
One second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. And Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. We will move on to reports, and we have Scott Kolbeck here from our elementary principal to speak on Adams and McKinley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have to let you know that as I find myself having more birthdays in my lifetime, I also find the school years go faster and faster as these. So here we are today. Today was the first day of the second week of the third quarter of school. So our school year is already half over, and it has just really flown by, which means that if our second quarter ended, not this past week, but the week before, we sent home second quarter progress reports with all of our students on Friday of last week. We always send it home the Friday after the last day of the quarter. So all of our families should have gotten or should have received the progress reports in their student's school bag. At the end of the quarter, then, that just means that at Adams School, I made classroom visits, and you've heard me share this with you before, I think, but we hand out attendance charms, which are quite meaningful to our young students at Adams. And they receive an attendance charm for their necklace if they had perfect attendance or if they missed one or two days during the quarter of school. We have some fun with that. This year, we're bringing Kit Kats and presenting them to the classroom teacher. So today, in front of all of the students, the teacher got to open a Kit Kat and break off not one quarter of it, but two quarters of it, and eat the Kit Kat in front of their class. And then we talked about the words "no fair", and we said, "It's fair that Mr. Kolbeck decides to give your teacher a gift and that they can eat it in front of you." So we had some fun with that. Also, some other things that are going on. We are doing, or just recently finished up, what we call our mid-year universal screenings. In other words, we take a look at all of our kids and where they're at and how they're coming along with their reading. We give them a screener called a DIBELS test. It's simply a passage that they read, and it's timed, and we can see how they're doing with that. We also give them a word list of real words and then a list of what we call nonsense words, just to see if they can sound out these nonsense words. And we take that information, and then we make some changes in their instructional programs, or we might see who may not any longer need title support, and are there any other students that maybe need to slip into our title program. So that's kind of Mike Ebbelold leads that charge with a number of other employees. Also, which started last week in both elementary schools of McKinley and Adams, are the winter map testing. We've talked about that in the past. We map test in the fall, winter, and spring in the areas of reading and math, and those tests are used to measure growth of our students. Hard to believe, but we're getting ready for, I'd like to call them spring conferences, but I still think they're winter conferences at the end of February, but we have conference letters going home at the end of this week. Then we open up the online scheduler, and families can go in and schedule their conferences online. So that's happening here. Recently, we set our date for kindergarten registration. That's going to be Monday night, March 23rd. Want to tell you about a fun little thing that's going to be happening at Adams School starting in March, but we've started the planning for it now. It's called "One School, One Book", and thanks to our PTO, every student at Adams School is going to receive a book. The title of our book that we've chosen this year is called "Bigfoot, Littlefoot". It's a really great read. A number of staff members have read the book already. And all of our students will get a book. In the book, there'll be a label with their name and their teacher's name, and also another label thanking our PTO for purchasing these books. Every night, the students will take the book home, read one chapter per night with their family, bring the book back to school the very next day. And in the last, they'll read the exact same chapter a second time and then have discussion with it. And then, school-wide, we do some activities. We have some fun trivia questions over the intercom in the morning, and some school-wide activities that all of the teachers will be working on and agreeing on. What's neat about this book, and I read it, it's written from the perspective of a Bigfoot, a Sasquatch, and they're actually afraid of humans. It's just very cute. And in the end, the child, the main character in the book, the child, becomes really good friends with the other main character in the book, a little Sasquatch. So the kids are really, really going to enjoy that story. February is I Love to Read Month. I was seeing some emails going around today by our McKinley teachers trying to help some ideas. One of the ideas they have, which they've done in the past, is something called DAR. It's an acronym for Drop Everything and Read, D-D-A-R, and all of the kids. At the same time, we'll take a book and go out into the hallway, fill the hallway at McKinley School, and they'll be silent reading for about 10 minutes. That's just one of many activities that teachers come up with during that month, I Love to Read Month. I was surprised to learn this morning when I arrived at school that this week has been declared by our governor as Paraprofessional Week. So thanks to our staff, we have thrown together a potluck on Wednesday at Adams School and a potluck on Thursday at McKinley School to recognize and thank our support staff and our par educators and special ed pairs for all of the great work that they do in our schools. So with the technology now, you can get a sign up out there quite quickly and have everybody sign up for various food items to bring. So we're going to celebrate the good work of our pairs this week at Adams and McKinley. Next week, thanks to our PTO, all of our kids in both schools of McKinley and Adams, we're going to be loading up on the buses and heading downtown to a Center for the Arts for a theater performance from the Magic School Bus. And we're really excited about that because this theater group that comes to town is well-known and has a very good reputation. So we're looking forward to that. And then lastly, I just wanted to share briefly with you that when we looked at last year's data from our map tests, the map tests that we took in the spring, we generated a few building goals from that that we're looking at this year. And one of the things that we noticed from last year's spring map test results is that approximately three-fourths, or 75% of our students in Fergus Falls in grades K-1 and 2 have scored in the 50th percentile or higher on this nationally-normed test. So we feel good about that, right? 75% of our kids are in the top 50%. That's better than average, which would be 50% of our kids in the top 50%. So we looked at that, and that was in the area of math. I don't know if I just said reading or math, but it's math, okay? So we're looking at that and saying, can we get that even a little bit higher than 74.7%, which is what we were at last year? So we've set a goal to increase that from about 74.7% up to about 77%. So if you look at an increase of about 2%, and we're looking at about 563 students, we're looking at about 11 kids. Can we get 11 more of our students in that 50th percentile or above? And then when we looked at reading, we noticed that we have about 2/3, or it was 64% of our students in grades K through 2 scored in the 50th percentile or higher. So we're looking at that and saying, can we bump that up a few percentage points? And then when we look at actual numbers of kids, you know, we're talking about somewhere around 11 to 15 kids. Interesting, when I looked at that, when I break it down by grade level, and this was something that we celebrated as a staff, and we talked about this at staff meetings, is that each year, so if we looked at the number of kids in kindergarten in math who scored in the top 50th percentile, and we compared that to the number of first graders who scored in the top 50%, and compared the first grade number to the number of second graders, every year, it got higher. It got better. Same thing in reading. So let me just share with you real quick. In math, in kindergarten, 66% of our kids. First grade, 75% of our kids. Second grade, 84% of our kids. In the area of math, scoring the 50th percentile or higher. So what we were celebrating is, we were saying, hey, look, I think the longer we have these kids with us in our school, in our school district, the more kids that we start seeing scoring in the 50th percentile or higher again on this nationally-normed test. When we looked at reading, the percentage in kindergarten was 55%. That jumped to 66% in first grade, which jumped to 73% in second grade. So we brought that information back to our staff, and we just looked at it as kind of a kudos to our staff for the good work that they do with our students every day. I know I talked a lot about attendance, and at the last meeting, I think I presented that there's three types of kids, right? The student that comes to school 19 out of 20 days, the student who comes to school 9 out of 10 days, and the student who comes to school 4 out of 5 days. Are you a 95% contender, a 90% contender, or an 80% contender? And attendance plays a big factor into these numbers that I just shared with you. So if we can improve attendance, we're also going to see an improvement in these numbers here. So kind of a long report tonight. Threw a lot at you. Can I open up the questions from the board?
Questions from the board?
Your potlucks, please, for pairs? What time is that? Just your normal lunch hour?
Yeah, so.
First class to stop in?
Yeah, at Adams, it would be over the lunch hour. First staff start eating about 11 o'clock. At McKinley, we're actually bringing enough food to try to feed them for breakfast and lunch.
Okay. So you want, like, before or after?
Yeah, probably 7:30-ish. And then in the middle of the day, I think our first, it's around 11. It's a little bit earlier than that at McKinley.
Sure.
About 10:50. We're not feeding the kindergarteners at 10:50. We're sending some out to the playground at that time.
There you go.
But some of the staff can start eating lunch at that time of day.
Other questions from the board? Thank you. Our next report is from Tindie Ron, who is our elementary principal.
Good evening, everyone. As I sit and listen to Mr. Kolbeck, I always have a little overlap with him about the happenings because we're working across elementary grades, and as much as there are differences between each building, there's that common overlap too. So I also just wanted to reflect that this school year is going by very, very quickly. And January 16th marked the end of our first semester, and we were just kind of racing quickly here, right after the Christmas break, to wrap those end-of-the-semester activities up and get progress reports ready to send home with students. So those progress reports did go home with students last Friday. We were really pleased with our attendance so far this school year. First quarter attendance was 96% or higher in the 2nd grade sections at Cleveland. Second quarter attendance, we saw, you know, despite the illnesses and the flu bug that went around and just some holiday types of travel with families, it's still 93%, 93.87% for 3rd grade and 93.4% for 4th grade. So we're pleased with that and continue to have those conversations with parents and students about the absence of their absence. But it remains a day-to-day focus. And I wanted to just share too with you about Cleveland building goals this year and what we're focusing on and what we're doing to achieve those goals. Our increase in student and family engagement is a continuation focused from last year to this year, and will be into next year too. It's one of those areas that takes continual effort in maintaining engagement with families as they have students entering our school system and as we're welcoming new families to the community. We're just always going to be working to formulate that expectation and those relationships with the people that we're working with. When I look back at our World's Best Workforce data that we reported on this school year, we were able to reflect that there was a decrease in the number of students who missed 15 or more school days from the 2017-18 school year to the 18-19 school year. With our 3rd and 4th grade students, we saw a decrease from 15.27% to 13.18%. So we had fewer students miss 15 or more school days. So we saw a decrease in that excessive absenteeism, and we just want to keep that improving. And I really feel that, as teachers report out, there were lots of phone calls made home, intentional phone calls to say, you know, "I missed your child today. Can I anticipate seeing them tomorrow?" Or in some situations, there's ways to push information home. Here's what we're doing at school. Here's what your child missed out on. Just simply that phone call, recognizing that, "I noticed your child was gone today." So we're continuing to do that, encouraging teachers to reach out or email. A lot of teachers are using the CSO app and just pushing information out to parents. So lots of different ways that teachers are communicating with families. This year and the next two years, Fergus Falls is participating in, it's called CARRY. It's out of the University of Minnesota, and it's the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement. And we, along with our surrounding school districts, are joining in a collaborative effort, or meeting on a regular basis, and really taking a deep dive into looking at what is the cause for the different absences and what more can we do to overcome some of the barriers or some of the hurdles that the families that we're working with are experiencing so that we can help them consistently get those students, those children, and their students to school so that these students don't miss out. And just like Mr. Kolbeck mentioned, when their attendance directly affects student achievement, as we all well know, and so we really want to bridge that, make those bridges with families, and together work with them to ensure that their children can get to school on a regular basis. So one of our goals continues to be that focus on increasing student and family engagement. I guess the only other thing I wanted to mention there is teachers are looking for ways to invite parents in, invite parent families in for events, not just the parent-teacher communication events, but other events where students have those opportunities to share with their families the projects and the work that they're doing in their classrooms, create some fun with it. It might be sharing an essay they've written and having a cup of hot chocolate, coming at their gingerbread house making, inviting parents into company groups on their field trips, participate in learning activities so that the families do become connected and comfortable coming into school as well and asking teachers questions. So there's all sorts of different activities and things that go hand-in-hand with that goal. The other goal, which is a district goal as well, for all 3rd grade students to achieve grade-level literacy. That read well by 3rd grade. As the students are entering school, they're learning reading skills and learning how to read. And then in 4th grade, they turn that big corner, and now they're reading to learn. So one of the board goals is that grade-level literacy for 3rd graders. And we keep in mind that our local literacy plan at all times, and we're doing a lot to continue to measure reading achievement in that regard by doing frequent progress monitoring. We're just, our 3rd grader will be taking the winter map test tomorrow and Wednesday, and so 3rd graders do that in the fall, winter, and then again in the spring. So that's our standard measure to measure their growth and are they meeting that grade-level literacy or not. Last spring, we had a lot to celebrate with our MCA results. And you all remember, this was just kind of a fun superintendent drink, including our MCA scores and one of his Otter observations. And we did, we recognized this at our schools, the grade-level meetings, and celebrated that, hey, our hard work pays off, and our students are achieving above the state average. Students at Cleveland and Kennedy performed above the state average in math, reading, and science. So we recognize that, and we need to celebrate those successes and build on them. So looking specifically at 3rd grade, 3rd grade reading students, 60% of last year's 3rd graders met or exceeded the state average, 55%. And then 4th graders, 62% met or exceeded the state average, 56%. So this year, when we're looking at what do we want to strive for and have that be our goal, this year, with welcoming, looking at last year's 3rd graders who are now this year's 4th graders, we're going to bump that goal up to achieve, have 62% of those students in that grade level meet or exceed the state average. And our goal will be 62% as well for our 3rd graders. And then in the area of math, last year, the 3rd grade students, 72% met or exceeded the state average in math, of 66% in math. And in 4th grade, 75% met or exceeded the state average of 64%. So this year, we are wanting to boost up the student achievement to, 75% of our 3rd and 75% of our 4th grade students will meet or exceed that state average in the area of math. And our efforts to achieve that goal come in the forms of, again, frequent progress monitoring. We're using the STAR assessments this year. We don't have the OPA that we used to have in place, but we are really looking at lots and lots of data. And I brought our list just because this is really impressive. And this is our math data, and this is just, it's kind of the beginning of 3rd grade, but you'll see the many, many columns. And we have last year's MCA scores on here for every student. Each column represents a STAR test that they have taken. And the spreadsheet just keeps growing and growing over the course of the year. So as students are taking these frequent probes, it's added to here. It's color-coded, so we can sit and look student by student and see, are they consistently growing? Or is there a score that's kind of lopsided? And it just really helps us dig into each student's achievement as we go through the school year. We recently just completed the universal screenings for all students, and 3rd and 4th grade students at Cleveland. And at that point in time, we really looked at specifically which students are receiving titled reading and math intervention or RTI math and reading intervention. And we made some changes. Some students had been maintaining that growth, and they were ready to exit that intervention. Other students who could use a boost of some skill intervention were added to either title or RTI programming. So adjustments are made as students are showing growth or showing a need for intervention in either or both areas of math and reading. So that's, I guess I wanted to just share with you some of the efforts that are going into helping students achieve these goals that we are establishing. We also use this data at child study meetings. We meet on a regular basis at Cleveland. We're meeting every other Wednesday morning to look at student data, look at referrals that teachers are making for students who might not be, I guess, performing up to their perceived potential. And we respond in various ways. Sometimes we're looking at, are the interventions that are in place correct and effective for that child? Is this child in need of a further educational assessment to be considered for special education services? So we just have continual conversation in this regard to meet the needs of our students at our district. And then lastly, I guess I wanted to share with you some of the upcoming things in February. We have annually had Fun Fridays in February at Cleveland, and it just generates a little excitement and enthusiasm and the fun. So there are three Fridays in February, and one, we're going to have Pyjama Day, which is kind of a favorite. Kids look forward to that. We're going to have a hat day, your favorite hat. And then the last Friday in February, we are going to be wearing our favorite flannels to school. So that's coming up. And then February 6th, the 3rd and 4th grade students will make their way down to the Center for the Arts for the Magic School Best Performance. It is titled "Lost in the Solar System", and for our 3rd graders, it's going to tie right into another special event that they have coming up in March, which will be a kind of a planetarium experience that we're going to set up at the Armory. And each 3rd grade class will have the opportunity to go into this domed planetarium and learn more about the solar system. So it's kind of a common thread that will tie right in with their grade-level curriculum as well. And then Mr. Kolbeck mentioned conferences, and I too just want to stress the importance of conferences on February 24th and 27th. We encourage families to use that online sign-up so they can look to see what conference slots are available and choose theirs and plug it right in. Students will be bringing home information regarding parent-teacher conferences this coming Friday, so it gives parents the opportunity to sign up online during that two-week window of time. We'll close that, and then teachers will be reaching out to any family that they haven't heard from to secure a conference time with those families as well. So we just really encourage parents to take advantage of that online sign-up because they can do it at their convenience. And that concludes my reporting. Any questions?
Any questions for Tindie? Thank you for your report. And our last report is from Dave Monk, our secondary school principal.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Mr. Kolbeck thinks that as he gets older, the days are going by faster. You can imagine how fast they're going for me. He's just a young pup compared to me. It is quiet. Started a new term, and especially at the middle school and high school, it takes a few days to get everybody settled into a full schedule. And so, you know, just kind of today, you know, as we head today, it really feels like we're sprinting forward with a new term. So that's going great. At the same time, our counseling staff is busy prepping our students in relationship to next year. I believe that our registration guide for next year is available online through the district website, so any parents that are out there can take a look at that document right online and see what they need to study up there. They're kind of in the phase now of going out into the classrooms and kind of explaining some of the offerings. And especially in relationship to preparing our eighth graders so that they're ready for that first ninth grade signup that will happen within that first week in February. So we can't thank our counseling office enough for the work that they put in for that. A couple of other changes here just to note, our upcoming prison concert has been moved to Wednesday, February fifth. And we're going to run that at five o'clock. We've done that on a couple of occasions where if we feel that we can have a concert experience in less than an hour, we'll put it on a Wednesday and have it done by our six o'clock cutoff time for activities on a Wednesday night. So if you want to just make that note, our prison concert takes our top groups such as our wind ensemble, acapella choir, high school chamber orchestra. And we kind of put the top groups out there for an evening and it's usually fantastic music there that's shared with the public. But five o'clock on Wednesday, the fifth. And then if you note our board over here, we have a list of the dress up days for snowball that is going on this week. And so we're, we all had our lays on today and, and we also had coronation today. And it was interesting how Mr. Tilke put out a plea, I think it was as late as last Thursday, saying, "We have two acts going into the coronation program." Okay, well students, what are you going to do? We had thirteen today. So everybody steps forward. We had a couple of staff members that stepped forward and it was really a great program. And yeah, just a, just a wonderful endeavor by kids and Mr. Tilke for throwing that together today. For our middle school, we have a Saturday school program that we're going to start going here on February eighth. And it is a chance for anybody that's had a little trouble in relationship to first or second quarter. Come on in, make up a little coursework, get that checked off the list so you're not looking at middle school, summer school. We've done this for the last several years and it really is helpful to a number of our students to kind of catch up and not have so much hanging over them. Really staying current in their core classes. So we'll do that for thirteen Saturdays. Kind of if we don't have school on Friday or Monday, we might kind of take that Saturday off. But we'll get that through May and see other students we can help out with that respect. And then I just have a whole bunch of numbers to share with you here, maybe in relationship to some goals that we've been trying to work at here at the secondary school. Program wise, a report on our CNA program. We had twelve students take the course for this fall. We had all twelve pass the written. We had ten of those twelve students pass the skills test. The two students that didn't pass went back and took it again on their own and passed that time. So we had all twelve for twelve go through that. And the last word I got back from the instructor this week is that we already have eight of those students working in the community. We have four at LB Homes and four at Pioneer Care. So just a fantastic program and those local providers are really appreciative of the opportunity to get some additional students trained. And some of these are as young as sophomores so they can have an employee there for a couple of years before they even go off somewhere else. So great. And it looks like we have another twelve students that are taking a course for this spring. And we have a cap on that course of sixteen, so we'd like to get a little closer to sixteen. But that's because we offer it for college credit and because of facilities and everything, while they cap us at sixteen. So we're lucky to have twelve and twelve this round. And our work-based learning program with Kathleen, Catherine Anderson went absolutely great. We had some of our local businesses come in for reception during this last week. Just kind of a thank you for them helping us out with this program. And some great stories told back and forth, both with the students and the employers there. As far as very appreciative of getting to know some of our students and having them up and about. We've got another eleven of those students out this term. And several of those placements this year because of unique areas of interest are almost going to be a shared experience where they could be going to three or four different employers in a three or four week timeframe. So to put all that together makes your head spin and Catherine, but it also does then expose more community members and more businesses here and agencies to what this program can look like and hopefully that'll help in relationship to recruiting for future years. Just in reporting more specifically about some goals at the secondary level. One of the goals that we have, of course, is in relationship to the ACT that our juniors take each and every year. And our, our goal, of course, with that is can we have our students score at or above the state average? And that really is a lofty goal for us because we encourage each and every one of our juniors to take that. And that doesn't have to be the case across Minnesota. So some schools could be out there just offering this as whoever wants to take it. And with that, you get, you know, a much higher score. But we encourage each and every one of our juniors, unless they're absent for two days, counting the makeup day. We want them to have the experience of taking this and we provide that opportunity for them. So this, this last year, that would be our current, this year's seniors scored at a twenty-one point eight and the state average was twenty-one point four. So slightly above that. So we're proud of those students that all put forth an effort there. As Scott and Timmy mentioned, attendance is another goal for us. Recent results of second quarter, our fifth graders won out. They came in at ninety-four percent. Our fifth through tenth graders were right around that ninety-third percentile. And our juniors and seniors were at ninety-two percent. So it would generally appear that that ninety-five percent goal is a great target for us. Because we're definitely not there yet. Thanks to Sarah Kemp and others. They're really doing a lot of great work here. And I know there's some new initiatives that they're talking about across the county to try to get a jump on this as well because everybody's concerned about this whole attendance area. So we're going to keep working on that. And then of course, our focus here at the secondary level is to continue to work to improve the graduation rates of all three of our high schools. And there's a remarkable difference in the graduation rate when you look across our Kennedy building right here. This last year came in at ninety-five point one percent. But our ALC came in at nineteen percent. And our IQ Academy came in at forty-four point nine. So when you average those two, those three together, you get a sixty-eight point eight. But plenty of room for improvement here. When you consider that one of the major factors to even be a part of our ALC alternative school is that you would be,
I'm sorry to interrupt. Are we here for the community of cooking class or the sixty?
It smells good, but we're not cooking in here. Well, the major criteria for being transferred to our alternative school is being not on track to graduate. So in other words, if you're looking to get fifty credits, you have perhaps a chance for fifty-six during your four years. They're probably well behind that by the time that they're looking to transfer to the alternative school. But yet the requirement over there is that it's the same thing. You have to finish in four years, at least as far as the data goes. But we have a number of those students, of course, that finish in their fifth year or maybe even into their sixth year. We call them twelve plus students for us. But that is not figured into these numbers at all. So you can take the numbers for where they're worth, but our goal is still in to improve all of those. We'd like to have a hundred percent graduate from the academy, you know. We'd like to get that ALC number closer to fifty percent rather than nineteen. Our IQ Academy has risen each and every year. And yet each and every year, we get more students and more seniors that come in us and more numbers. So if they're raising that percentage and we're getting more numbers, they're tracking in the right direction. And we have ESA teams at both the Area Learning Center that are meeting and Crystal Tools and at the IQ in relationship to meeting with Brian Johnson. These are teams put together of the faculty and staff members. And, you know, they're busy and probably to sum it all up, the number one thing that they're trying to do is create relationships. And keep the kids in school. If we keep the kids in school, we've got a chance. And many of our students that are coming across the state to our IQ Academy online school, it is one of the last ditch efforts for some of them that they're trying to make. But at least they're in school. So we'll continue to work on those numbers and try to raise those. Some of the initiatives that we have directly located within Kennedy, which of course impacts both here and the students that may end up over at the ALC, just to give you some numbers there. We have a reach program that we've started and Ellie Nicolason and Carrie Fato, fantastic instructors. And they are really buying into this. This is the program that was started in Hutchinson, Minnesota. It really takes a look at areas like team building, interpersonal skills, character ed, study skills, and opportunity for study time. And so you kind of put your week together and you go through and you do some goal setting for a week and for the month and for the term. And these gals are just fantastic working with these students. We've had hardly any of our students that are looking to get out of the program. They all feel that it's being beneficial for them. In our high school alone, we have thirty-four students involved in that program this term. And across the building, in grades six through twelve, we have sixty-three students that are involved. So a lot of students getting some extra help. We have some English courses that are supportive in relationship to English nine and English ten. We have over twenty-one students in that getting some help. Intermediate algebra support, these are students in ninth grade that take a, an additional class to support them within their interregent math class. So they drop an elective to take an extra math support. Fourteen students are doing that. Geometry foundations, another twelve. Algebra foundations, another twenty. Chemistry foundations, two sections with forty students there. Along with some efforts that we're doing by way of credit recovery and independent study at the ALC and using the digital curriculum called Admentum to give some credit card recovery options for some high school students that can do that either over at the ALC or right here within this building as well. So just some raw numbers there, but a lot of students involved in giving some extra help and trying to improve those graduation rates. Questions?
Questions for Dean? Coronation was today?
Coronation was today. It went really well and we try to do one of those in the afternoon. Like the homecoming one is done in the evening.
Right.
We like to do this one in the afternoon because then we get all of our high school students.
It's one thirty today, isn't it?
Yeah, one thirty today. And yeah, and I was just really impressed by our student body. You know, because there's not all polished acts that are, that are on stage, you know. And they were cheering, clapping, respectful, you know, just kind of enjoying the whole experience. And I know a couple of staff members came out. They're kind of, gosh, I thought our kids were great today. So I'd really like to see that.
That's good. Okay. Okay, moving on to our general consent items. We have the minutes of the reorganizational school board meeting. A regular school board meeting held on January thirteenth, twenty twenty. And let Wayne sit down here for a second.
All right, am I?
Personnel, yes.
It's been a busy evening out in front of our office or our, our meeting room here. All right, we do have some personnel changes. First item here is certified staff hire Sandy Sunlad, IQ, a special education teacher. She currently is a teacher with us. We're just increasing her time due to enrollment numbers at IQ Academy. So her contract increased a little bit there. James Devine, he's going to be a long-term special ed paraprofessional here at Kennedy Secondary School. Support staff resignation, we have Jonah Hove, custodian here at Kennedy. And then we have a couple certified staff contract reduction requests. These are both IQ teachers and they're both rescinding teaching contract rights for second semester. So that would be Gina Bush and Anne Sko. So I recommend these all for school board approval.
Do we have a motion to approve the general consent items as presented?
So move.
Do we have a second?
No second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? General consent items pass. There is no old business. Moving on to new business. Item number one is a resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for the reduction of programs and positions and reasons therefore. Whereas the financial condition of the school district dictates that the school board must reduce expenditures. And whereas the reductions and expenditures may include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of programs. And whereas a determinate, determination must be made as to which teachers' contracts must be terminated and not renewed and which teachers may be placed an unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits and affecting discontinuance of positions. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number five forty-four as follows. That the school board hereby directs the superintendent of schools and administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to officiate economies in this school district, reduce expenditures and make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs and curtailment of programs. Let's somebody offer that resolution, move for its adoption.
All offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
And do we have a second?
No second.
Steve, a second. Okay, discussion?
This is an annual thing that we do.
Correct.
Every year? Because, yeah, because sometimes programs have good tenants and some don't.
Correct. Any other discussion or comments? Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Limkey?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Item number two is the fundraiser request to be held between February first, twenty twenty to September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion to approve those fundraising requests?
So move.
Do we have a second?
No second.
Any discussion? All those favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number three is a resolution on the school board governing board supporting Form B application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Whereas Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for the Minnesota high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts. Whereas the Ferguson Falls Public Schools governing board recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas the Minnesota High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist school districts to provide seminars, training opportunities, or support for specific school functions for student, faculty members, officials, and others who are involved in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the Ferguson Falls Public Schools governing board support the school's application to the Minnesota State High School League's foundation for Form B grant. Will somebody offer that resolution, move for its adoption?
I'll move to that.
Thank you, Kirby. Do we have a second?
No second.
And discussion? Yes, Melanie, second. Okay. My pen just sent.
I was watching your lip pop.
It just pops all over the place. So again, this is an annual resolution that again allows us to access funds if it becomes available for us to be able to use. So any other discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Matthew Limkey?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. The resolution is adopted.
Okay, item number four, thank you. Item number four is the purchase of a service agreement for the transportation of children and youth in foster care placement effective 1-1 of 2020 through 12-31 of 2020. Would somebody like to approve that motion?
I'll, I'll move that we approve that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I think, well, we talked about this a while back. Basically, if we have students in 544 that are in foster care and they're placed in a different community, that we will use our existing bus or transportation if we can get them on that. Our second option is that we would have Artele coaches pick them up. And then finally, if they're, if they're not attending 544 and attending another school district, then that school district is gonna be responsible for working with Artele County to share that cost. I think that kinda summarizes it. Is that right?
Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Item number five is the FY 2020 seniority list for independent school district 544 Ferguson Falls Public Schools. I only have had a chance to look that over and so do we have a motion, do I have somebody that would offer that motion to approve? Steve, do we have a second?
I'll start with that.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Item number six is a lease agreement between ISD 544 and the state of Minnesota DPS for the vocational wing army parking lot effective from April 1st, 2020 to March 31st, 2023. And would somebody offer that motion to approve?
So move.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
And any discussion? Again, this is kind of an annual or actually a five-year, it's been a working agreement to allow them to use the levy, well, not the levy, excuse me, the army parking lot for motorcycle training and stuff like that. So if that, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, okay, motion passes. And item number seven is the governor's proclamation of paraprofessional recognition week. So whereas Minnesota is home to more than 20,000 paraprofessionals who provide service in multiple settings within schools, including support for instruction, student activities and individual students, as well as numerous other tasks that contribute to the educational success and whereas the support and services provided by paraprofessionals are integral to the student achievement, resulting in more effective Minnesota schools and whereas the state of Minnesota and the Minnesota Department of Education are committed to excellence in education and recognize the important role that paraprofessionals play in sharing educational success. And whereas the Minnesota Department of Education will celebrate the contribution of paraprofessionals during Paraprofessional Recognition Week, which runs from January 27th through January 31st, 2020. Now therefore, the governor of Minnesota, Tim Walz, hereby proclaims the week of January 27th through January 31st, 2020 as Paraprofessional Recognition Week in the state of Minnesota. Would somebody offer that resolution for its adoption?
I will.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Except that we wholeheartedly agree.
Yes, we love our paras and you're awesome.
So roll call, please.
Okay. Stephen Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, absolutely yes. That proclamation is adopted.
Thank you. That concludes our regular school board meeting. Following this meeting, we will go into a work session to talk about the NSBA conference. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, February 10th at 5:15 right here at the Art Community Room at Kennedy Secondary School. With that, do we have, will somebody offer a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we are adjourned.